Good evening. Call to order, the Riviera School Committee meeting of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll all salute, our raising salute flag. Dr. Garcia, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Stacy Rizzo.
Here.
Ms. Anthony, Anthony Cagiano.
Here.
Mr. John Kingston.
Here.
Mrs. Aisha Milbury Ellis.
Present.
Ms. Jacqueline Montrose.
Present.
Mr. Frederick Sanella.
Present.
Mayor Patrick Kiff.
Here. We have a quorum. Okay. First up, we have recognition. Nope, no recognition today. We're not going to recognize anyone. Okay, actually, well, I will take the moment to congratulate, we have a new school committee member-elect in the room tonight, Mr. Steven Damiano. He will, he will be representing with Award Four School Committee. We also want to congratulate School Committee Woman-Elect Vanessa Baisala, representing Ward Six. She's not here today, but congratulate her as well. There will be two new, two new members serving on the council, as well as Alex Romali, representing Ward Two, who is, was also elected on November fourth. Thank you for everyone that got out there and voted. And offer my, my congratulations to Fred Sanella for, for serving his time in the city, the school committee for many, many years and continuing to be part, I'm sure you'll continue to be part of our school committee in years to come. Thank you for your contributions, Fred. Thank you. Okay, the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Stacy Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Anthony Cagiano.
Yes.
Mr. John Kingston.
Yes.
Mrs. Aisha Milbury Ellis.
Yes.
Mrs. Jacqueline Montrose.
Yes.
Mr. Frederick Sanella.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kiff.
Yes. Okay. We have the student representative report. Delia.
Good evening, everyone. I have the student rep report, and tonight's a special night because we have our newly-elected advisory board. So, I moved up as senior representative after being the junior rep last year, and our newly-elected junior representative is Zohah Hassan. And we have our other board member, Nicolas Pedroza, Adrian Supelano, and Ada Luadi, who couldn't join us tonight. As always, we are in accordance with the Massachusetts general law, where our school committee advisory board is made up of five members elected by the student body. So, quarter one report card grades went out last week, which were extremely important for seniors because it impacts early action admission decisions. And then we had our financial aid for students and caregivers. This was an incredible opportunity where we had presentations from Mefa and North Shore Community College. It was an example of how RHS continues their ongoing commitment for preparing students for post-secondary success, and strengthening our connections with our school, families, and community partners. Next, we had a Bunker Hill Community College compelling conversations event. A group of thirteen students were able to visit Bunker Hill Community College for an event with Ali Raisman, a two-time Olympic gold medalist and team captain of the U.S. Olympic Women's Team in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and sixteen. They were able to have a meet and greet with Ali before they asked questions and took pictures. Next, we had the New England Laborers Union Training Facility in Hopkin, Hop, hold on, Hopkinton, thank you. A group of students were able to tour the New England Laborers Union Training Facility. It's really a state-of-the-art facility. They were able to learn about different work opportunities within the laborers union, and they were able to enjoy lunch in the dining hall. We would like to especially thank everyone who helped make this opportunity possible for students. For our sports roundup, our Patriot Field Hockey Team had a tough ending but an overall great season as they qualified for the state tournament and won the GBL championship for the second time in our school's history. Revere Boys Soccer ended off successfully making it to the second round of states and finishing second in the GBL. And the Revere Girls Cheerleading finished their decade-long winning streak as GBL champions, and they're going on to states. For our club reports, speech and debate competed at Sharon High School for the novice tournament, a tournament meant for students new to speech and debate. All grade levels of student council have sold their pep rally T-shirts, and students are almost ready for the pep rally next week. One of their favorite parts is pie in the face, and we can't wait to meet this year's participants. Maru UM participated in the Fall Craft Fair hosted by the Lincoln School PTA, and night filled with fun, and it was a great fundraiser for our club. Next, there was a trip to Boston Public Gardens with students for an outdoor painting day. It was an incredible opportunity where students were able to observe real-life landscapes, experiment with natural light, and draw inspiration from the environment around them. The hands-on experience encouraged creativity, reflection, and a deeper connection between art, nature, and the community. Thank you to all the staff members and students for making this a successful trip. That's what I have for the student rep report. Thank you.
Okay. At this point in time, we have public speak. If we have anyone in the audience that signed up for public speak, no Robin, okay? And anyone online that wishes to speak?
No, nobody online.
Okay. Seeing, hearing, none?
Motion to close public speak.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sort of. Okay, superintendent's report, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two reports, as you know, as the committee knows. We like to do two or three reports from different schools or departments each month to keep both the school committee and the community up to date on what, what's going on across the district. And so tonight, we're going to hear from the Romney Marsh Academy, and then from City Lab High School, both who are going to present on some of the work that they've been doing and the work that they hope to do. We're going to start with the Romney Marsh Academy, and I have to give a shout-out to the principal, Dr. Bob, who achieved her doctorate just a couple weeks ago. Congratulations, Heather. And I'll welcome you up to introduce your team and your presentation.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you once again, Mr. Mayor, School Committee, Dr. Kelly, for having us. I'm always proud to brag about the work that we're doing, and I brought a team with me today. We're going to be talking about our
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. What you missed was me thanking the mayor and the school committee and Dr. Kelly for giving me the opportunity to brag about our students, which is my favorite thing to do. And tonight, we're going to be talking about deeper learning and equity in the journey that we've been on as a school. And so, our presentation is really a systems approach, using solid systems and keeping up with them in order to improve student experience. So, I have a number of students with me who are part of our eighth-grade restorative justice class. They are our restorative justice ambassadors. Their teacher is here supporting them, Ms. Gil Martin, and also Kelly Flynn, our middle-school ESL coach, to talk about some of the work we've been doing in getting students to do the thinking and the speaking in class. So, the next slide, our focus has been on the power of presence. Mostly, as we unrolled this last year, it was about getting kids to school regularly, on time, and every day. But as we continue to focus and reflect on the power of presence, it goes beyond showing up. We are doing a tremendous job of getting kids to school, but taking that further and thinking about what it really means to be present. As you are aware, we were deemed in targeted assistance based on our DESI accountability last year. It's a two-year designation. And so, we created an attendance team last year to really look at getting kids to school. We've tightened up systems in the classroom to provide regular observations and feedback, not only on what we're seeing in classrooms, but looking at teachers' lesson plans and providing feedback. And together with our DESI partners and Great Schools Partnership last year, as a school, we decided to focus on three areas. One was providing grade-level rigorous work. The second was on teachers co-creating and sharing the purpose of an activity each day. And the third was who's doing the work here in the classroom? Is it mostly the teacher, or is it the students? We want to shift that load to students. So, those were the three focus areas that we embarked on last year. We're continuing them this year with a really amplified look at improving and increasing academic discourse, which is students talking through the content to each other using academic language. So, that's part of that third, students doing the thinking. That's our real laser focus this year. And of course, being inclusive, ensuring that all students in an equitable way are being heard in the classroom. The next slide takes a look at our continued attendance initiatives, which is led by our Coordinator of Operations Data and Assessment, and then supported by what we call our wraparound team, which is administrators, school adjustment counselors, the guidance counselor, and the family liaison. So, we have hosted and will continue to host family engagement events, not just meetings, but celebrations of culture, of student work, and at our parent coffees, opening them up, having an agenda, but opening them up for families to give us feedback on what they would like to see happen at school. We have co-created success plans with counselors, nurses, social workers. These are individualized, data-driven meetings. Again, our Coordinator of Operations Data and Assessment hosts those meetings. Our teachers are sending personalized parents' wear messages when students are not at school, letting them know that we miss them and we notice when they're not with us. And so, the result of that work and that continued work is that we exceeded our chronic absenteeism targets for every single student subgroup. So, we went from zero out of four points the prior year to four out of four points last year. So, this is the work that is continuing with our coordinator this year. Just some itemized data related to those attendance and academic gains. So, you can see at the top, for chronic absenteeism, it's mirroring what I just said, which is that for all students, we went from a twenty-five percent chronic absenteeism rate in two thousand and twenty-four to a twelve-point-eight percent in two thousand and twenty-five. So, we cut that in half, or did better by double, I guess, is a more positive way to say that. And then, taking a specific look at high-needs students, we did even better than that, and we were able to reduce chronic absenteeism for that subgroup by fourteen-point-two percent. And then, looking at our MCAS scores, we were able to improve by three-point-five average score points in ELA. And then, in science, our high-needs students increased by seven-point-two points overall, over the course of one year. Knowing, I, I guess, for less than a year, because this work, you get designated, you get that in November. We forged a plan with Dr. Kelly and Dr. Mokaba, also took a big role in coming to the school and meeting with our DESI partners and our teachers, who have been nothing short of remarkable. Our team has really stepped up to the plate with any ask, any new initiative. They've been amazing to work with. So, speaking of amazing people to work with, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly Flynn, who's going to take us through the next slide, which speaks to our gains in civics.
Hi, so, as you can see, this data shows how well our language learners did on the eighth-grade civics test. And I, there's a few things that go into that. I think, one, all of the work we've done with lesson plan feedback, observation feedback. But additionally, Heather has set a course on making sure students are doing the thinking in the classroom. And in turn, that means students are doing the talking in the classroom. So, I went into just grade-level PGTs, or content PGTs, and met with teachers and did PGTs on student discourse and how to get students talking in the class. And you can see that, as the students are in these classes, they are learning to talk more, and when students are doing the talking, they are doing the learning. Additionally, most of the students at Romney Marsh are receiving ESL services in a social studies class, so you can see that that co-teaching model is working there.
Don't go too far. So, just pointing out, in case you can't see the graphic, our multilingual learners actually bested the state in civics in that same subgroup in this past year. I warned you I was going to brag. The following slide highlights one of the features that we have as a district right now and as a school is something called Who Knew It? It's part of our student information system. And each and every day, we can take a look at how we are doing toward attendance as compared to thirty, the last thirty days, the year-to-date, and then compared to last year. And you can see, I pulled this report last Thursday. Even though we had such great gains last year, we're actually doing even better than that by not only sustaining the systems that we created, but through our Coordinator of Operations, really refining those systems and making sure that we're meeting with families early and often. We are actually ahead of being where we were ahead last year. The following slide demonstrates some of our, the way that we have crafted a culture of excellence and celebration, and really, our place where students feel comfortable being at school and want to come to school. This was an award ceremony that celebrated MCAS growth achievement, and many, many, many of those faces actually have perfect attendance so far this year. We did that two weeks ago, so a lot of those certificates are for perfect attendance, which includes zero tardies to any class or to school. And actually, one of the students that you're going to hear from is one of those perfect attendance people, if you see her celebrating. So, when I speak of a systems approach, this is just sort of a recap of, of a lot of what I have said and what Dr. Mokaba touched upon in our MCAS data last month. School-based administrators, coaches, and peers are actually, teacher peers are providing observations and feedback on lessons. So, as a coaching and administrator team, we've logged over three hundred classroom observations so far this year already. And teachers are, and students, and maybe they can speak to this if you ask them, are used to having many, many adults come through classrooms throughout the week, and it's become a normal part of our culture and a welcome one, which is a nice side effect. Our teachers submit lesson plans in our Google Classroom online every Friday. And again, our amazing instructional coach team helps us out as administrators by working together to provide feedback to every single teacher that provides lessons each week. And then, we have protocols. When teachers meet for PGT, we use a common language, and we have high expectations for ourselves and our students. And so, we do our best to use that time very productively and to look at student work and come up with ways to make instruction better. And again, grade-level rigorous materials, the purpose, and students doing the thinking as our fokai, and I think students and teachers, if you were to ask them and poll them what our focus is this year, they should all be able to tell you, we are working on academic discourse as a lever for equity and for deeper learning, because that's one of the very many ways that we know how students are growing and if they're learning by asking them. It seems simple, but it's true. And so, with that, we are going to ask them, I'm going to invite our Restorative Justice three oh one ambassadors to come up and introduce themselves and talk a little bit about their work, what they do, and how it all connects to this deeper learning journey that we're on. So, you can come on up. I believe we're starting with Nohom.
Hello, I am Nohom Gramessa. As you heard, I'm a Restorative Justice ambassador. And Restorative Justice isn't just about talking with others. It's also about building a connection among your community, and not only students, but with teachers as well, and it really helps a lot.
My name is Jisak Monkada, and in Restorative Justice, we do a lot of like relationship building and bonding. And it helps me in classes, and it helps me to, like in group work and stuff. It's, it allows me to see other students' perspectives more, and it allows me to see how they think of certain topics. And, and in the future, it allows me to see other students' perspectives. And from seeing some students' perspectives, allowing to see other students' perspectives is way easier. And it allows me to build up my, my skills and helps me to do work more efficiently and productively.
Hi, my name is Kayla Men. Yes, I'm RJ ambassador. When, when we're in Restorative Justice, we're able to, be able to communicate with others more productively and better. We, we're able to read things like body language and like eye contact to see if our classmates and peers are feeling comfortable or tense or things like that. And with that, we're able to adjust our like personality or approach to the situation that we're given. And it helps us just, you know, be better at working together.
So, we all make mistakes and like, in Restorative Justice, I've learned to always like have an open mindset and always like be optimistic 'cause we're not always right, but we learn to grow from our mistakes when we're always wrong, like. I try to take it as a learning opportunity, 'cause there's always times when I'm wrong, but like, I try to build off of that and become like a better person and more informed from that. And I always try to be optimistic, 'cause sometimes things are bad, but I always try to be happy and like think of all the positives.
My name, my name's Rania, and overall, using our RJ skills, we learn to like have a approach of confidence in using like, yeah, our approach of that, and over time, it helps us grow comfortably to talk in classes and engage in different conversations. And, you know, it helps us, you know, share our ideas, you know, express our opinions, and overall, spread our thoughts without feeling like judgment throughout our class. It helps us just seek more like academic growth, but more social growth to yourself and to your peers in your class.
All right, so those students who we love dearly and we're very proud of act as models when we're conducting group work and having this academic discourse. We have one more slide, which is kind of the summary, and then if you had questions for the students after, we can do that. I'm going to turn it over to Kelly to, to bring it home.
Thank you. So, all of the work that we've done at, at Romney Marsh Academy has involved different systems, student voice, attendance effort, and making sure that all students are recognized as a part of the Romney Marsh community. We are providing feedback to teachers to make stronger lessons, which is again impacting every student in the building, not just a certain set. We are offering academic discourse opportunities through continued professional development for teachers, including more and more rigorous and more frequent opportunities for student discourse. There's family meetings and success, success plans to help students, and all of that together is going to increase the inclusion of all students, increase our MCAS scores, and increase, increase our attendance scores. The graphic on the bottom is something that we've been looking at in our weekly RMA coach meetings. And we've talked a lot about how we want to support the educators in the building. And you'll notice the green box up in the top-right corner is where we really want to be for maximum growth. We're giving teachers a lot of challenge and students a lot of challenges, but at the same time, we're supporting them to reach further and further. We're trying to avoid getting teachers disengaged or retreating or stagnating where they are. We want to continue their growth and help them succeed and help our students succeed.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. That concludes our presentation. Thank you so much for your attention.
Ms. Montrose.
Thank you. Well, first, for any proud parents, our, our meetings are on YouTube, so you can go to Riviera School Committee. You can see the whole video of your students presenting, if you want to keep that. But I think it's amazing to see the attendance changes that we're seeing, the MCAS scores, like your team is putting in the work, and we're seeing those results. And we know there's, there's a lot of attention and focus rightly so in RMA, but to see that growth is amazing. So, I want to acknowledge the work that you and your team are putting into that, Dr. Bob. And then, I, for the next time that you all come, I would like to hear a little bit more on what specific educator retention practices are looking like. We know there's a lot of turnover at RMA specifically, so just learning more about what those trends may be looking like, seeing if these changes are also helping our teachers come back. And then, for
And then for the students, I know you all sat down, but I had one question for you. I just wanted to see, ask if you all think, have you seen a change in how your teachers and all the staff are supporting you from like last year to this year through the, all the events, the supporting you to come to school every day? Like, do you feel like there's a change in the environment from the adults in the building? You're just gonna cut it, come for the cameras. Yes, perfect attendance.
Personally, I think I've seen a change for the teachers for like attendance, wanting to be more punked, punked, whatever. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think I've seen more of a change from like seventh grade to up to now. I think they've trying to do more for the school, for the students, not just for themselves or for the looks. I think they personally really do wanna change. And I've seen like different sideshows, different like talks to the students, posters, our power of present sideshows. And I think really they're just like building on to like each other and trying to support like the concept of attendance and all these problems, you know.
Thank you, Dr. Baum.
Thank you for your presentation. Sees everything is going in to the right direction. But I wanted to ask you about the chronic absenteeism. It said in twenty twenty-four, we had twenty-five percent?
Yes.
That many kids wrote? Okay. And how about?
So can I just clarify one thing? So students are defined to be chronically absent if they've missed ten percent of the school year. So for us, it's about eighteen days. And so what that data was showing, and it's not just at the Romney Marsh across the district, even worse at the high school. When COVID happened, we saw a huge uptick in the number of kids who were chronically absent, which meant they missed more than eighteen days of school. And so that's the work that the Romney Marsh has done. They brought their percentage down from twenty-four percent, I think. So far this.
Twelve.
Yeah.
Right now, we're at seven percent.
Right. And of course, it's early in the year.
Right.
But one of the things that's great about the Who Knew It program that we have in our student information system is it tells us which kids are chronically absent, but it also projects which kids are trending toward being chronically absent before the end of the year. And that's some of the data that our coders are using to get ahead of it and meet with those families and talk to those parents about making sure habits change so that the kids don't end up being chronically absent when we get to the end of the year.
And the other question one of those is parents' participation. Has that been getting better?
I have to say, our community is, is amazing. We, right now, for example, we have a food drive going on to just help out our community. And we've, we have hundreds of items that families have contributed. We, we have parents showing up for our coffees, for our events. I think having Parents Square, which is the communication platform, has been a real game changer over the past two years as well. Having that as a district, it allows our teachers to communicate in real time and it translates. So we have a really high percentage of two-way communication with our families. Being bilingual myself is really helpful, I think, as well because people feel comfortable to come in if they're Spanish-speaking and just have the conversation. We do as an administration team, particularly our coordinator, again, who is catching these trending chronic students early and educating families about, well, this is what we've done before. This is what we, how we used to, like plan trips. She's done a wonderful job of educating people around what the policies are. I think there was this misconception that there, there is no policy or it doesn't really matter. But we're making sure that everybody understands it does matter. There is a policy, we do follow it. We're kind of known as forcing it at the RMA from a kid perspective, but I, I wear that as a very proud badge because they can, you know, that's why I thought it was important for a student perspective to be here because they feel the success and then they come to school because it feels great to do well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Baum. Would you like one? You guys wanna come up for a photo? Come on up, right up here, right up front.
Very nice, very nice. That's okay, that's okay. I just want the kids to have it.
So you're full attendance, chivviness, and I haven't been late. You haven't been late. The rest of you all?
What are you gonna give them if they maintain their attendance for the whole rest of the year?
Is this the whole, is the whole group?
Lunch with the mayor?
RJ group, Boston, the mayor. I wanna see good attendance, people like, like.
What's for lunch, remember?
What's for lunch?
Higher tech, it's gonna be very high attendance.
I think I wanna medium-stake mayor.
Hold me accountable to it.
I will, I will.
Mayor's office, lunch with these five. If you come to, Dr. Baum.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Now she has to be full attendance the rest of the year.
The next item on the superintendent's report is a presentation from Dr. Mulligan at City Lab High School. And she's got a unique proposal that she's gonna put before the school committee, so.
I am. Good evening, school committee members, Dr. Kelly, Dr. Garcia. Thank you for having me this evening. I will be presenting some really positive and exciting updates about our first senior class to come through City Lab and a new proposal for you to review. So it's been four years since we created City Lab. In that time, we have focused on redesigning the student experience and making it engaging, real-world, applicable, and innovative. I'm just clearing my glasses, I don't know what I'm even doing right now. At this time, I'd like to present a new project to the school committee, extending this level of innovation to the educators of Revere Public Schools and neighboring districts. I approached Dr. Kelly last spring about how I could support all teachers at the secondary level in a meaningful way. This was on the heels of the contract negotiations ending. And from the feedback I was hearing, teachers felt unsupported and weren't able to do instruction in a way that would have a positive impact on the student experience, whether that was from student safety concerns, schedules, or lack of resources. I am proposing that City Lab become an instructional hub for our district and other districts seeking to learn and collaborate around innovative secondary instructional practices. We are looking to provide a space for educators to observe professional practice and share effective strategies that drives instructional growth and creates intentional leadership pathways for educators. This would be a non-evaluative space. I can't make that clear enough. It's about people coming together to become better educators. We want teachers to take professional and academic risks to improve their teaching craft without the fear of evaluation. This is not new to Revere. It is something that needs to be revisited, revised, and innovated. In my conversations with veteran teachers and even this morning with veteran administrators, teachers have always had a strong leadership role in this district. So why this model? Just as students learn best through collaboration and peer modeling, teachers thrive when they have opportunities to observe and learn from one another. Adult learning mirrors student learning and seeing effective practice in action is one of the most powerful catalysts for improvement. We propose positioning our school as a showcase for professional practice, creating opportunities for meaningful peer modeling, both within our district and for visitors from other districts and states. What we are proposing is a spin on what we have already done in Revere and bringing life back to it by pulling inspiration for how others have approached this level of educator leadership within their schools and districts. Boston Arts Academy, Boston Day and Evening Academy, the Mass Learning Project, and other institutions in the state have explored higher levels of teacher collaboration with cross-district PLCs, teacher leadership networks, and school-based teacher centers. We want to push this design even further by offering a year-long space for educators to come and see that school, that doing school differently is possible. We have some really great educators at City Lab, but this is not just for my teachers. There are others' teachers at the secondary level that are just as great, if not stronger, within the district that could do a teacher residency with us and have educators observe their practice and craft. This directly aligns with this year's district improvement plans on instructional goals to build teacher capacity while expanding opportunities for educator leadership. So why in Revere? At the secondary level, we're losing teachers at an alarming rate, not just in the city of Revere, this is statewide, this is nationwide. It has become clear that our students need a different approach to learning. Teachers need a safe space where they can take risk and experiment with new strategies without the fear of evaluation. This instructional lab can provide a collaborative environment where secondary educators can come together and learn from one another to refine their practice. This past November fourth, we had an in-district PD where the feedback was overwhelming that teachers appreciate and value seeing their colleagues work in real time. Over the past two years, I have presented how we do school at City Lab: experiential learning, instructional practices, external learning opportunities, steam pathways, access to early college. Across our district, we have implemented a range of instructional approaches to support and improve the student experience: Project Lead the Way, High Tech High, project-based learning, competitions-based learning, and MTSS-tiered instruction. This is a chance for some of our strongest educators to showcase this work and share the strategies they have used to make it successful. Thanks to Dr. Kelly's leadership, we're preparing to open a brand-new state-of-the-art high school that will be one of the most massive and significant construction projects in our state. It is essential that our instructional practices rise across the district at the secondary level to match the potential of this new space for our students. So why us at City Lab? Since our redesign process, we have seen measurable improvements. More students are enrolling to the tune of a waitlist. Daily attendance has increased, it's tripled. Teacher efficacy has grown and student feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. Additionally, our work has drawn attention from educators beyond our district. Visitors from states including New Hampshire, Connecticut, Rhode Island, and Kentucky have come to see firsthand how we do school. As a small school, we have the space and flexibility to support this work. Over the past four years, through our participation in many communities of practice, we have developed strong partnerships with districts already engaged in similar models. Additionally, we are entering our fourth cycle of BAR grant funding and our partners at BAR have expressed interest in supporting our district in this work. They have already invested $750,000 in our redesign process. They are committed to City Lab and have a greater commitment to seeing our innovative practice expand throughout the district. The change cycle. According to supervision and evaluation of teachers, school clinicians, and administrators, an example of professional learning change cycle outlined an approach that was implemented over time, allowing teachers six weeks to implement new practices and then spending another six weeks observing and supervising implementation to assess mastery. Using these observations to determine the next round of professional learning creates a purposeful and data-driven cycle. After gradually going, I'm sorry, after gradually rolling out our rigor-tuning protocol last year, we are now differentiating professional development based on teacher mastery levels to promote continuous improvement and model the differentiated instruction we value. So I'm not going to go through the next slide, but this is just a quick snapshot of our process. Just so you know, that this work has a different level of intentionality. And we've been doing it since April of last year. We built a strong foundation to help teachers build capacity to maximize student outcomes. I did this by working directly with the high school content coaches and the teachers in my building to create a safe environment where the work we do collaboratively was not showing up in an evaluative way. We needed to build trust and to allow teachers to develop, allow teachers the space to develop their skill, be vulnerable, and take risk without the fear of evaluation. Our process is the next slide. We first defined what rigor looked like. We invited teachers to the table and we looked at student work. Through this, teachers were given the opportunity to improve their craft and I was able to get a clearer understanding of what I wanted to see in teacher work and in the classroom. I also want to emphasize that during this six-month process, the work was entirely non-evaluative. Observations still occurred, but teachers were not evaluated on this specific focus area while they engaged in this rigor-tuning protocol. So just some final thoughts about this endeavor. What I'm proposing is going to take time. I know hearing all of this seems like a lot. When I approached Dr. Kelly last May, I said I wanted to do this work. I have a strong team and I am part of a strong administrative team district-wide that will see this work through. But in all honesty, there will be disruptions. Teachers will need to leave their buildings to come to us. But if we invest in our educators in a different way, the long-term results will be worth it. Ideally, I'm looking to start this work as of fall of 2026. And I look forward to hearing some of your feedback about it. But before you give me feedback about it, I wanna talk about the seniors. So this year marks an exciting milestone. Our first cohort of City Lab students will be graduating. We are graduating our twenty-nine seniors a semester early. So our students will be done as of December this year. On average, seniors have earned eighteen or more college credits in the time that they've been with us from Franklin Cummings Institute of Technology, Mass Art, University of Pittsburgh, and UMass Amherst. Twenty of the twenty-nine are actively involved in the higher ed process. That means they're in the admissions process already. And nine earned the Abigail Adams Scholarship. I'm super proud of the seniors. And that is all. So I'm welcome to take your questions.
Ms. Mulberry Ellis.
Sure. There's no doubt that the work that you guys are doing over at City Lab is innovative and amazing. And this is just an initial step in a, in a long process. But I would be interested in seeing how this play, like what it looks like, the impact that it has on the teachers, the impact that it may have on the current students and their learning, if any. I just wanna have a clear picture in my mind as to what this looks like. And I just don't have that just yet, so.
No, it's, we're early on still. So the first meeting is December second and that will be with the BAR Foundation. Dr. Kelly will be there. I don't know if she knows it's in her calendar. But Dr. Kelly will be there. Some advisors that have done this work from other districts will be there. Boston University that offers a free coordinator to help you roll out this work will be there. So there's a lot of planning to do. That's why it's almost a year from now before this even starts.
Yeah, no, it sounds wonderful. I just wanna, I mean, my first priority is our students. And I, you know, I know we had some kinks to work out anyway at being a new school. So I just really, I'm, I'm sure that you all have, you know, the best interest at heart. And this is just something else that we're gonna take on that's gonna be beneficial to the entire district. I mean, it sounds wonderful. I just wanna have a clearer idea. So as we go along, if you could come back and just give us updates on what's going on and keep us apprised that way. That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Rizzo.
I was just looking over the process and I really like how it's non-evalu- I'm not even gonna say the word, but evaluation. Thank you. I like how that process is working. I'm curious to see how it works. I think it's important.
Ms. Montarosa.
I think, I've said this before, Dr. Mulligan, the way you have transformed this school, like I hope you take that pride. When I first ran for office, Sea Coast at this time was referred to as the other school, right? Like I, I came here, I moved here and I was like, oh, we have one high school and then we have that school. And the way our students and our staff in that building were spoken about was just horrible to me within the community. You have transformed this with your team to a school that has a waitlist where students are just thriving and they're loving it. And I think the opportunity that the superintendent gives our administrators to be able to bring projects like these to us is also why we're able to retain administrators like you. So I hope, I hope you see yourself and take that pride with everything that you're doing. And I do agree with this Mulberry Ellis. I think this would be a very easy vote for me, but I would like to just hear a little bit more. And I think maybe if we hear back from that December second meeting with the BAR Foundation, then we could put it as a formal motion on our agenda for the December meeting to just see what updates you have to the whole committee. We can all discuss more and then hopefully fully give you that unanimous yes, so you can continue the work. Oh, the one question I will have is, will there be any money from our district budget that would have to go into this just so that we can have that full picture in December?
I can't say right now.
Yeah.
I don't want to say no and then be begging for money in a few months. I'm hoping not. I feel like this is actually a more cost-efficient way than to send our teachers out to expensive PDs in different states and different schools. Having an in-house train station would be really great and we have the teacher capacity to do it. We have the remaining teachers throughout the district that we really want to showcase what we're doing.
I'm excited to vote for this in a few months.
Dr. Mulligan, thank you for your presentation. I've seen the transition in the school and I know that you're not, your work isn't complete. It's a growing process, so I appreciate it. I think it's been great, you know, to just know, being here for as many years as we've all been in Revere, what it used to be and what it's, we're growing into, having kids earn college credits, having kids have a sense of purpose, going to school for actual school is kind of important to me. My question, when they graduate earlier, when they finish, you know, halfway through this, their final school year, you know, so if they're graduating December and they don't maybe walk until June, do they pick up work? Do they start enrolling in college courses?
There's a mix of everything. Some of our students want to continue on in our pathway, so they will be taking some classes this spring. Some kids are interning this spring. Some kids want to just start working and banking money. We have some kids that are going into the union and want to just start that process immediately. So there's a, it's not one pathway for everybody.
Okay.
That's really the beauty of our school. It's always there.
Great. And then just to, so and the BAR Foundation's obviously pretty esteemed. And we know what that means for the district, especially for your school, if you're able to receive an award from them. So if there's any testimony or any support you need, please let us know as a council. And then just for, I, we talked to, I talked to DK, just relative to this school, I know it's not your school, it's also the Beechmont Elementary School. Just for everyone's knowledge, the city received a grant to help put in a mini pitch, which is kind of like a small soccer court in the back where the street hockey court is. So that'll be refurbished at some point, probably next spring. Giving you an early heads up. We'll communicate any construction plans. It's not a big amount of construction, but there'll be a mini, we received a grant and a special donation from kind of a US Soccer Federation to add a mini pitch back there. I think it'll be benefit to the area. Obviously soccer is the growing sport in our community, so just a little early heads up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just a presentation for a minute, so.
Yes.
I just want to add my full confidence in Dr. Mulligan in her ability to bring this program to Revere. She's, as everybody has already articulated very well, made really influential changes at City Lab that have transformed lives for the children of Revere. One of, a few of the things I want to highlight that we've talked a lot about as a school committee is the idea that what City Lab is, is what we envision for all of the children of Revere. And when we saw the enrollment there increasing, 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 I think I said to this committee, our greatest problem is going to be when we want, when all the kids want to go to City Lab. That's a, that means that we've achieved what we wanted to achieve. And we are designing the new school. Even the educational plan for the new building is entirely different than what this high school is. It includes the five pathways that you're all aware of and a survey for students in their freshman year where then they would pick a pathway and study that pathway more intently, following the model of what City Lab does, where the kids do a lot of academic work in their freshman and sophomore year and then move on to internships, college-level courses, and that kind of work in their junior and senior year. So one of the things we've learned in our years since we implemented the block schedule here at Revere High School is that we really do need to do some really intense work with teachers for them to understand differently what instruction looks like. And our teachers at City Lab, with all of the support that we've already had from the BAR Foundation and other partnerships, have really mastered that well. And even when I go over there and walk through the classrooms, it just does not look like what a traditional classroom looks like. And that is a goal for us to get to everywhere across the district. So I'll be right beside Dr. Mulligan at all of the BAR Foundation meetings. I'll be proofreading her grant application with her and really striving to make sure that we get this done. And of course, we'll have the school committee come and observe it as well when, if we, if we get the grant and we're able to implement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the report of the subcommittees, personal subcommittee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as the chair of that committee. So we met the week before the election. Won't do that again next time, but. So I will have the minutes to our subcommittee for you all to review and we can all approve them by next month. But basically, we are starting back up the superintendent evaluation process. So last time, it was that mid-cycle one summative. I always get those confused, Dr. Kelly. Formative. So now it is time for the summative, which is the fuller one. So now that the district improvement plans have been approved, now the superintendent gets to create per plan using those. So she is going to work on it and present it to the full committee in December for approval. And then those are the goals that we are going to use to evaluate her. And then we all decide whether it's in the spring, by the end of the school year, so she has enough time to work on it. So this is really important because she was working off of old goals when we last did the evaluation. So it'll be important for us to then see how she crafts these. So it'll come to all of you all for approval at the next meeting, hopefully, unless she needs some more time, she'll let us know. And then we'll move over with the evaluation timeline for her. So that's all that we discussed.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay, great. We have motions? No motions? Give me a quick one tonight. Okay, any unfinished business? No? No new business? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, Ms. Montarosa.
I think usually remind everyone, Mayor, but anyone watching, we have our community Thanksgiving dinner next Tuesday. Is it Casa Lucia?
Casa Lucia.
For anyone who wants to join the community and then happy Thanksgiving to everyone next Thursday.
There'll also be a food drive at the event, so if you want to bring any non-perishables, if you can go to the city's website or their social media pages, at the beginning of the night, they'll offer a food drive outside. But come in and enjoy the community Thanksgiving dinner, planning on serving well over 500 people and offering some homebound meals. But yes, from all of us, I know that we wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week, so see in December. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.